Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This afternoon, to kick off things, we have a special guest from the George Washington Regional Commission, their Executive Director, Dr. Linda Millsap. And Dr. Millsap is going to give us an executive director overview of their budget. So come on down.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Just sit down just a little bit. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and members of the committee. It's good to see you again. As you know, I've seen many of these folks around nine o'clock last evening, so appreciate you all entertaining me one more time, so very much appreciate it. I reached out to Mr. Foley and all of the CAOs recently because it had come to my attention in reading our charter that I am supposed to report on our budget to each of the jurisdictions that contribute. That was something that was news to me and my staff, but Mr. Foley was kind enough to allow me to come do that with you this evening, so thank you very much. I wanted to start first, if I might, and I won't take much of your time, but we're really excited about this. As I mentioned, some of you saw this last night, but if I might hand these out, we have a new annual report. I didn't send it in advance because I wanted to make sure, thank you, sir. I wanted to make sure that the board approved it, which they did. And so that walks you through all of the different activities that are encompassed. I'll keep one of them. You can have all the rest of them. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. So you will see in this, it walks through all of the different, what I would affectionately refer to as lines of business that are covered by GWRC. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes to walk you through those, talk to you about, a little bit about our budget and the return on investment that we're excited that we can bring to you as a jurisdiction, and then answer any questions that you might have, and I understand there might be some. As you will see from here, if we go through in alphabetical order, we have a lot of economic development things going on. That's relatively new, and I was here, as you know, just a couple of weeks ago, talking to you about one of those, which is Good Jobs Here, which is this coming Thursday for our first meeting at AAM in Stafford County, by the way. It'll be at UMW Stafford, and so we're excited about that. We are also, what's called the Support Organization for Go-Virginia Region Six, and so that covers not only the GWRC region, but also the Northern Neck and the Middle Peninsula. That is the one program that we run, that we get complete funding from the state to run that program and to put together match for any programs that might come forward from you all and your economic development authorities. And we have spoken to the CAOs recently about where we might want to go with that in the future, should you all want to start funding those types of projects, more than you have already. I understand you've already put some funding into some specific projects to date. The second person, second line of business that we have is probably our oldest, which is environmental services, and in that, we receive funding from the state primarily for coastal zone management, technical assistance. We've also gotten some additional funding to work on what's called WIP III, which is doing our part to put together a plan for the region, including best management practices and commitments from each of the jurisdictions in terms of what are we all going to do to try to improve and continue to improve the quality of the bay. And so you'll see there, we have put in, we have recorded 577 volunteer hours, valued at about thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars, just to do one particular project. Almost all of the match for that program comes in as a soft match from primarily your local solid waste officials and others across the community. We also do the Continuum of Care, which is our primary human services program. That is funded primarily through funding from HUD and the state homeless services dollars. There is a match for that, and we utilize some of the funding we get from Stafford to help pay for a staff person for that. We have fifty-seven member organizations as part of the COC, and we have managed to keep the number of homeless people through the works of all of the associated folks down to right around two-hundred-and-twenty, so we're really excited about that, and we have moved five-hundred-and-sixty people, have been moved to permanent housing through the COC just in the last year. The next item we have is transportation demand management. You all will remember this, is GW Ride Connect. This is also one of our longstanding services, and this is the second-largest financial item for us, and it is one of the largest places that we utilize the dollars that you provide to us through your dues to GWRC. And so that, of course, helps get all those people down the road. I understand no one should be going down the road Saturday and Sunday down 95, but other than that, put people in vans, and we're excited about the work that's been done there because it takes, effectively takes, one lane of traffic off of 95 every day. And we appreciate the longstanding commitment that several members of this board have had to the GW Ride Connect program for many, many years, and keep pushing us forward to do even better. And then, of course, we have transportation planning, which is the FAMPO group, and so they are one of our partner organizations, and we have several organizations like FAMPO, COC, and GW Ride Connect that we serve as either their lead agency, their staffing agency, their fiscal agent, that we provide some of that support so the folks that are on those boards can get the things done through the staff that we are able to help support to get those things done that are very important to you all as members of the Board of Supervisors. One of the things that you will see in your packet is something that I was actually encouraged to put together by one of our board members, looks at the organizational impact in terms of the return on investment for the dollars that you all invest in George Washington Regional Commission, and so you will see each of the lines of business that I mentioned to you there. We are very, very pleased to say that because of the funding that you all have consistently putting forward along with your partner jurisdictions, that just that dollar alone is a match that generates four to nine dollars directly, so that's the match. So for a lot of our program, that requires a ten percent local match, a twenty percent local match, but in addition, because we have been so successful with those dollars, we're actually able to get additional funding with no additional match, so our minimum return on investment for every dollar that we get from Stafford County is approximately fourteen to one, and then we deliver it back to the community through this list of services. So that's kind of the high level, looking at overall what GWRC is about. And as I mentioned, we're supposed to talk a little bit about our budget, so I won't, again, take too long, but I know you do have a copy of our budget in your packet. I'm kind of excited about this. When Ms. Bomke was our chair, she very much encouraged me to, stronger and better, I think is the way that I would put it. So we used to have a four-page budget, and you will see that we now have a thirty-page budget, and that's one of those things that she really encouraged us to move forward, and I'm excited about that. And why I'm excited about it is because it provides additional transparency to you all about how your dollars are being spent and what they're being spent on. And so as you look through here, you will see, of course, just like yourselves, our largest category of expenditure is personnel. It's about one-point-eight million dollars total we spend in personnel, and then one-point-three million dollars in consultants, which is primarily, although not exclusively, for the transportation planning services for FAMPO. The next largest is pass-through. I will tell you, this is something many of our board members do not realize that we did, but we actually collect and forward to the state about half a million dollars a year of insurance payments through the Vanpool Alliance, and so that's what that pass-through money is, that you'll see there on page two. You see a lot more detail than you probably want to see there, but we can walk through any of the particulars here. I did want to bring to your attention a couple of things we're excited about that have changed in our budget this year. First of all, we are going to retire the loan on the building, so even though we don't own the building, we actually had to take out a loan, apparently, to do some of the upfit and renovation about ten years ago. That will be retired. We also have done some changes in terms of how we bill our grants, which in particular, I believe, will help us with some of the financial issues that have gone on with GWRC, and you all have graciously helped us with over the years. It's a little bit of inside baseball, so bear with me, but almost all of our funds are reimbursement-based, with the exception of one grant that we get for about seventy thousand dollars in the local funds. Everything else is reimbursement-based, which means we have to turn in a bill, get money back, and then pay out other bills. One of the things that we have asked VDOT to allow us to do, as one of our primary vendors, is to change how we bill leave. So in the past, GWRC had been billing to our grants leave based on when it's used. So if I take three days of vacation, that gets billed to a grant, but if I earn a couple of days of leave, then that wasn't counted. What happened is, over time, GWRC started to acquire a lot of liability for folks in terms of sick leave and annual leave, that then there was not a reserve for that, and that's caused us a lot of cash issues. One of the things that we've been able to do is shift that basis, so now we bill our grant for all the leave that's earned, subtract that which is used, and go forward, and we believe that will make a substantial difference in some of our cash positioning. One of the other things that we've been able to do is, VDOT has also been kind enough to make us the only PDC in the state that gets paid twice a month, so that moves up our accrual by about two weeks, so that's been really helpful to us. And then we've also acquired a couple of extra groups of funding this year going forward. So we will get, again, some WIP III funding from the state, and that's a new source of revenue. In addition to that, we will have some new funding, hopefully, around affordable housing for about a hundred thousand dollars, and also moving forward with a strategic plan, which will be funded through VHDA. So, Mr. Foley, Mr. Chair, I don't know how much more than that that you wanted to know. I'm happy to answer any questions, but since I gather no one has done this before, I didn't know what the model was, so I thought I'd start with telling you a little bit more about us, free to answer any questions if that's appropriate.
You're doing a great job. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Bomke.
Dr. Millsaps, could you explain, for the benefit of the colleagues here, those that weren't at our meeting last night, because they're not on GWRC, that you, about the conversion, and also about the updated quarterly reports that Ms. Mauer had requested last year during the discussion of the MOU?
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, I failed to mention that. So there are two additional things we have changed. One of them is, it turns out that our staff, when I mentioned we are all kind of receipts-based and billable hours, our staff was filling out an eight-and-a-half-by-fourteen sheet of paper with six-point font to bill our hours to different grants. It's not a terrible system, but it's probably not the best system, and so we also found some other problems that we were having with our underlying accounting system, and so with the help of some of the folks on this board, we've been able to kind of move into the current century, and we have converted over from an accounting system called GMS to QuickBooks, and if we have our auditor helping with us, that makes it much more transparent. I will tell you, the previous software was less than transparent and less than understandable to those of us who looked at it every day, so it was understandable. The board members didn't understand it. We also have introduced software called ICAT, which helps us with appropriately documenting the indirect costs, so that's pretty much myself and our accountant and our overhead, those kind of things. And we've also engaged something called Clockwise, which is to replace that green sheet that I mentioned, and so all of our employees will actually, are now, we've started actually going in and every day are supposed to be saying, "Of my day, I spent four hours on this project, three hours in this, and an hour on this project," and that will allow us to automatically bill all of those grants appropriately and quickly. So that's the one, the conversion that Ms. Bomke spoke to. And then the second item has to do with the quarterly reporting. The FAMPO part of the organization was asked by its oversight agency and us as their fiscal agent and staffing agent to make sure that we had a much higher level of detail in what we reported and to report quarterly, both on progress on projects and on expenditure of funds. We had been doing that candidly, not that much. We were just responsive to whatever the grant said, but we weren't reporting things on a regular basis across the board. So we have used that as an opportunity to go ahead and start that for all of the organization, but we have started particularly with FAMPO because it's a requirement for them, and have started putting together quarterly statements that we will be giving to the board and, of course, can make available to you all, which will identify for each line of business, each of their major task areas, where they are according to expected budget and expected progress on the project, both in terms of budget and activity, and if there are any challenges, what are those? And we also have the red, yellow, green, so if something is starting to be problematic, it'll show up as a yellow, so there will always be a cover sheet for the board members and the public to understand that this one is behind, this one's ahead, this one's exactly where it's supposed to be, and we will be applying that across the organization throughout the year. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Shelton.
Dr. Millsaps, I'm telling you, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I really like a lot of the things that you've done. I'm not on GWRC anymore, but I have a question to ask you, and you may have said it yesterday, so my apologies, is I knew that as of like two weeks ago, we were still in arrears, maybe three-and-a-half months, for the cash flow back to Stafford. Where are we now, and do you, what, did you brief a plan for when that we're going to get to that tipping point?
Sure. That's an excellent question, and at times, we have been, you are correct, behind as much as three-and-a-half months before I got here, but nonetheless, it has been an issue, and it's been particularly an issue because it's, in some ways, taking advantage of the very nice relationship that you all have given us, and there's some, some good history of you all candidly stepping up many years ago when GWRC was really faltering, not able to get staff, and Stafford was the county that came forward to help. So I want to make sure that I point that out as the first part of my answer. Currently, I believe we are at three payrolls, which is one more than our target. Our target in dealing with some of your finance people has been to try to keep to two payrolls is where we'd like to be. Obviously, we'd like to be at zero, and that's the goal, and I think when Mr. Foley and I have talked, we know that's supposed to be our goal, so that's, that's our plan. In terms of how we're going to try to do that, I mentioned making some of these changes that move our billing faster, and the change to our leave policy and how we draw that down, we've already seen with one month, that's making a pretty substantial change. That leave fund will go in a designated fund, not a reserve, so we will be able to borrow against that because we know we're going to get that money back, so it's not chasing, it's not giving that money up, it's borrowing against it for about six weeks and putting it back. So those are some of the things we've been able to do so far. Some of the things that we are working on doing is, I did put before the board last night for discussion, not for a vote, was also a request for our funding for next year, that our base request to you all would be the same, the point-six-three-four-four cents per person, but also a request that the jurisdictions in total would consider putting up twenty thousand dollars towards building a fund balance. And so that's kind of the start of that conversation. Candidly, I don't know where that'll go, but the auditor has also been clear to us that they would like us to have three months of fund balance, because that's just good practice. Some other things that, that we're trying to look at, the board did approve to pay Stafford interest. I think that the discussion now has been, that's probably not the most appropriate thing, maybe we just need to actually solve our problem, so given that, we're going to start walking down that road and have thought about maybe going to some other financial tools, but we need to get the approval of the board to do any of that.
Any other questions? Thank you, doctor.
Well, thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Chairman, I just mentioned that the construction report, you've got a hard copy, we won't go over that today in the essence of time.
Correct. And the delegation from Zimbabwe has been postponed until Thursday. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with those amendments.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Vote passes seven to nothing. Presentation is by the public. I do have one speaker card. When you come forward, you can speak on any subject that you would like. We ask that you keep your comments down to three minutes. When you state your name and address, the green light will come on. You will have exactly three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you're down about a minute. The red light means wrap up your comments. Please state your name and address, unless you are a high school student, do not give your address. Speaker card is Mr. Jeff Adams.
Jeff Adams, 449 Kellogg Mill Road, Stafford. Let me give you my disclaimer. I'm a Stafford County farmer. Mr. Snellings, appointee to the Ag Board. I served with Mr. Cohen for years on the Ag PDR. I'm an elected director to the Soil and Water Conservation District, and Stafford County has a conservation easement on our farm on Kellogg Mill Road. I've got a lot to say about PDR and TDR, and I'm not going to say a thing. What I'm going to do instead is invite you out to see our farm. Over the next five weekends, we're open to the public, so you can see what the conservation easement has done. You can see the work that we have done with Tri-County City Soil and Water. You can see the livestock. You can see the riparian buffers. You can see how we're protecting the water going into Abel Lake. Not going to charge you like we are the public. This is my invitation to you. Would love to see you, and it's just, you know, the next five weekends. Anytime, show up. We've got a hayride, we've got a maze, got a few things for you to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We'll certainly pay. Keep in mind, we make the big bucks up here, so paying eight bucks is not a problem for us. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board? Please step forward. Any subject? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Reports of board members. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Bomke.
Yes, thank you. I attended the Yankees in Falmouth event in White Oak this past weekend. It was great. There were lots of children there, parents. It was well-attended and look forward to it again next year. I thank you, I thank them for coming out and doing what they do for the community. I also wanted to mention, this wasn't a question for Dr. Millsaps as it related to GWRC, I also wanted to mention that last night at our board meeting, she did say that they are in the process of updating an outdated procurement manual, so they're working on that as well. And lastly, I attended our quarterly library board meeting last week. The 2020-21 budget was presented by the executive director and discussed by the board. I did not support the budget as presented because there were no actual revenues and expenditures from prior-year audited financial statements included in the document. During last year's budget discussion, I had requested this information be added to this year's proposed budget, and it was not. Also, Spotsylvania County, the other large county as a part of the Rappahannock Regional Library System, their appointee also did not support the proposed budget. In addition, Stafford County did not receive the chair position for this coming year, although it was our turn to be chair. The code of Virginia is silent on how the chair is determined, I believe, and would like to discuss with the board at a later date the rotation of the chair, like we do on, on our other regional boards, for example, GWRC and FAMPO. Then everyone understand who has this position each year, as well as the other positions as a part of the library board. We contribute five million dollars to the library each year, and I love the library. It's a, we have great libraries here in Stafford and throughout the region, but I believe that we can make improvements to the bylaws and streamline the process. I'm working with our county attorney, Mrs. McLendon, in reviewing the library bylaws to determine if we need any changes for the benefit of Stafford County taxpayers. I'll be, as your appointee to the library board, I'll be bringing additional information back to you as I have that information available. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item number seventeen from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier.
Thanks, Julia. I'll defer. Any comments?
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to let you know, Ms. Bomke, I support you in your efforts to do fiscal oversight of the library. It is a great institution, has great things, particularly in our family, for the work it does for outreach for the visually impaired, so I think the work you're doing is very helpful, making sure that services are done in there's oversight, so thank you. Just four quick items. I attended the Economic Development Forum that was held. It was the fourth one of the series with creative ideas being brought forward for the idea of a Stafford Live Museum, as well as for the downtown Stafford. There will be a review and revolt, results, not a revolt, but maybe, review and results session on 10/2 at 7:00 PM at the airport. So if you were not able to participate, you still can participate online, I believe, and your input is always needed and welcome. I visited the Potomac Tribal Center, which has gotten to work since we have gone forward with giving them the lease to the property. They had a work session one Sunday where individuals from eight to eighty were down there, helping clearing and working to make their dream come true. They also were praising. They were praising Stafford County, and in particular, Mike Morris, for his work in helping them achieve what they have long tried to do. I also went to the Civil War Weekend at White Oak Museum, the now-new name for the Yankees at Falmouth. This was an excellent educational activity and event for people to learn about African-Americans during the Civil War, what children, women, the Confederates, as well as the Union troops down there, and so it was a great event, as always, and of course, we keep deep in our thoughts and prayers, particularly today. And lastly, I had the great pleasure of going down with a group of young adults and old college professors like myself, who are working towards having an ecological research and educational center down along the Rappahannock. And this is in its infancy. A gentleman named Henry Cox has been spearheading this. He communicated with Ms. Shelton, and I thank her for bringing me in on this as well. They had architects from the Virginia Tech there. There were fourteen grad students, two undergrad students, and three professors that came. They're looking at trying to do something wonderful about having something to help with the environment, help with research of the river, and to help with tourism down our area on the property that University of Mary Washington has down next to our tribal center, so sort of keeping this in a nice flow for what we have down there. You go from there to the tribal center, to Ferry Farm, to Chatham, to, I mean, it's a really nice flow. These, this college students, the School of Architecture at Virginia Tech, won an international contest for one of the buildings they did, so this is in its infancy, and more information will be forthcoming and coming to the whole board, but it was really exciting to see the germination of this whole process, and that ends my report. Thank you.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you, Cheryl. I have a few things. I routinely try and make updates on the progress of projects, and several of them are ones that I follow very closely, so I haven't reported anything on updates on the garrison, which is going to have the movie theater. I have been very emphatic that things are moving forward, and there are things happening that, that will confirm that there's movement forward, and it's not as fast as I want, and I'll tell you, it's not as fast as the developer Pence wants, but last week, they concluded and paid for the rights to a tiny piece of property on the corner of Travis Lane and 610, where the pedestal for the traffic light that's been proposed is going to go in there. In order to settle it, they, they paid, in my opinion, substantially more than what the property was worth, but they moved things forward, so they are still waiting for final approval on the lease that they've been going back and forth with from, from Regal. The Regal headquarters is in Europe somewhere, and it's, believe me, there's no one that is more frustrated than Pence and myself and the people of Stafford County, so we got our fingers crossed as far as the movement, but it's one of those things that could drop at any, any time. The other development is the Publix Grocery Store, which has gone in on the corner of Mine Road and Courthouse Road, broke ground, and I posted a picture of it for proof. There's a lot of doubters and naysayers out there. I just wanted to show them that there is movement on a lot of things, and it just depends on the developer. Something happened over the weekend that upset my, me and my family, was one of my oldest friends, his granddaughter was attacked by two dogs while she was riding her bicycle on the sidewalk. The, the entire episode was captured on someone's, their The entire episode was captured on someone's, their camera from their doorbell. So the line of sight was straight down the road, and while you couldn't see the dogs actually attacking the young lady, you certainly could tell that they were, there was mischief there, and she had fallen off the bike, and they hovered over. Luckily, there was a Good Samaritan who rushed into the fray without any consideration for his safety, and the dogs were shoot away. But they stood there, just out of his reach, prepared to pounce at any one time. So I can't tell you how disturbing this makes me, that a young child in a subdivision or an area couldn't ride her bicycle without the fear of being attacked. I know this is a controversial subject about the protection or the care of some of these large animals that are actually bred and trained to attack. This is, to me, an exclamation point on what I think should happen. There isn't anything that really this board can do. It's got to be done out of the legislature. But I will be personally talking to our legislators about some kind of a protection for these young kids. These dogs literally pulled down the fence. The dog was so big, and the two of them were very, very aggressive toward the children. As it is, they'll be, they'll be held in, held by the authorities for nine days, and they will be returned to the owner into the neighborhood eight days from now, unless something else happens. I find that to be an absolute travesty, and how are these kids going to play in that neighborhood? I'm bringing this up because this is not unique. This happens, and it's unfortunate that we have to have this. Every single dog that attacks their owner says, "Oh, he's the mildest, gentlest dog you've ever seen. He's never, ever done anything like this." And I'd say, you know, this is not a three-strikes-you're-out ballgame. This is a one-strike-and-you're-out ballgame for me. But I just wanted to warn people that this is out there. There are very few legal protections that you really have, because when this subject comes up for legislation, I was down there when we worked on this, and the dog owners of these large aggressive dogs come out of the woodwork to fight for their animals and stuff. So I just ask for your prayers for this young girl who is going to be in hospital for quite some time, recovering. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Mrs. Mauer.
Couple of things. I attended the PRTC meeting. One of the things I want to kind of alert staff to is they're meeting, or they're moving people again. And so Mike was kind enough last year to let me know that they talk about movement of people, that they're going to, they're going to save money because they have reduced staff in one area and increased staff in another area, which led to a jurisdictional impact. So last year, it cost Stafford an extra $10,000 a year in our contribution to PRTC, and this year, the jurisdictional impact that came at the bottom of the report looked like a 25% increase. So I wanted to give you guys a heads-up, that there are some staff changes, or some proposed staff changes coming down with PRTC that could have, although it is a net zero for PRTC as a whole, it looks like it's going to have a 25% increase impact to our jurisdictional contributions. So we need to be monitoring that and looking at that closely. Again, thank you to Mr. Smith for bringing that to my attention last year, because it did cause for some, it resulted in some reporting requirements that we ask for from PRTC now. Also, I attended the GWRC and the FAMPO meetings last night. Really happy to report that I was on the finance committee. Really like the way that they're changing the way they do their financial reporting and also their financial collection. Although this was required by federal highway, because they take federal contracts, it's a federal contracting requirement, and it's required by federal contracting regulations. And so really excited where GWRC and FAMPO is going. And I also want to say thank you to Kelly Flynn. Kelly Flynn works for me at G-Cubed, and she donated her time on several occasions in order to help with the conversion of GWRC, at no cost to GWRC. She's my finance manager, and we use, although we don't make any money, we are not sponsors of Clockwise, or QuickBooks, or iCat. Want to be very clear about that, but we do use that in our organization as a federal contractor. And so thank you to Ms. Flynn for donating several days of her time to GWRC. Also, we had a finance and budget meeting. There were three items on the agenda. One of them, which came up for question last meeting, and that was the changes to our CIP policy. I want to thank Ms. Shelton and Mr. Cohen for your due diligence and working with staff and ensuring that the changes that we're making are appropriate. So thank you for your time, and it looks like this is on the consent agenda and has been moved through the FAB committee for approval. In addition to that, we got the projects from the Stafford schools. We've got a long way to go on the school CIP, but the good news is, is we've started talking now, and that's better than what we were doing last year. But we do have a long way to go, and I'm looking forward to our meeting with them on October 15th. We're having a joint session with the school board. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shelton.
Well, that was hard to follow, because you did a huge amount of work, Ms. Mauer, both at GWRC and at the FAB. And I want to thank you, both of you, Tom Cohen, for going down to work with the Friends of the Rappahannock and that project they're working on. I really see that as a fabulous economic development activity for us. I mean, I wished I could have gone. I just wasn't able to. But I was able to go to the FAMPO meeting last night, and I had an item on the agenda. I thought I would bring it up, because it's going to be maybe the first time you've heard about it. And so, but I bet it's not, because what it is, is something that's old, but it's new. I live in the Aquia District. For those of you that live in the Aquia District, we are completely bound by one artery, and that is Route 1. Route 1 has all kinds of words we can give to it, but it is the output for anybody that's on 95 that has nowhere else to go. So when something happens on 95, which happens every day, then the people that have no place to go come on Route 1, and for those of us that live there and have no other artery, we are landlocked. We have no place to go. So some of the efforts and one of the commitments that I made when I ran last year, or the year before, it's been a long time. Feels like forever. But anyway, when I, one of them was, we had to do a transportation, to do something about congestion. VDOT just completed the STAR study. I talked about that before, and that is in our district and Route 1. And one of the things that we found out is that there's going to be really hard for us to get rid of any of the congestion on Route 1. We all knew that, but we needed to see that in writing. And so now I'm bringing back, okay, what else can we do? Let's think out of the box. Let's think about what we did 10 years ago. You guys call it the Outer Connector. I call it some other road. And so what I would like us to do, and I'm going to ask the board to do, our board, to do in the future, is to look at some other tertiary, some other road, some other solution in Stafford County or around Stafford County, within our region, that will provide us some alternative for our future. You know, everything that we do in transportation that I, it's sad, but it's true, that what we start today, we're not going to see the fruit of that for 10 years. Well, I'm not going to be here in 10 years, probably. And so, well, I hope not. Gosh, that'd be really old, wouldn't it? And so I'm not, I have no intentions of being here that long. But my point is, is that we are, we here, this, we elected body, all the individuals that are here in Stafford County, we have to be focused on the future. We have to think about the future. So there's sometimes we have to do things that are painful and put our blinders on and just think about, what is this going to look like for our grandchildren? When we did the Outer Connector years ago, then there was a lot of controversy, a lot of baggage is sitting there. I want people to set aside that baggage and think anew. Think of something different. Think of whatever it is that that solution could look like. And the reason is, is because we owe that to our future. Right now, the properties that were, the previous roads were projected to be on, they're now houses. They're by right houses. They're houses that people are allowed to build on. One of them, one area even has a lake on it. So it's like, that land, we're not going to build new land. That land is never going to go away. And I mean, not go away. We're never going to get additional land to build on. It's just going to continue to be filled up with houses. So my, I'm imploring Stafford County, not just this board, all of us, to think about what we need to do for the future and come up with some solution, knowing that it's going to take 10 years at least to get there. And so I brought that up last night to the FAM, our FAMPO meeting, and we're going to consider that as a region, but it's really, really important for us to consider it as a county, because all of us have to agree into it to get that done. You guys were here when it failed last time. I wasn't, and there was a lot of pain that people went through. I don't want us to do that. We have an opportunity. I'd like to see us at least consider that. And so that concludes my comments, Chairman.
Mr. Snutlings.
Just real quick. I'm assuming this is going to be put on committee?
It's already.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll defer the rest of my comments. Thank you. Report of the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we mentioned earlier, the construction report is included in your information. We won't go over that today to save time. Primary issue we have today is for, to provide you with the year-end results, the financial operations. But I wanted to take just a brief moment before we do that to talk a little bit about what's been going on in our organization, frankly, over the last two and a half years. As a board, we recall, we had a lot of turnover when I first came. And to be, to be quite honest with you, I'll just rattle off, just for the significance of it, the new staff that we have in leadership positions in this organization over the last two and a half years. I was the new guy on the block, obviously, so that, there's one new person. But Mike Smith was a deputy in place. He'd been in place for less than six months when I started. We hired Fred Presley as the other deputy. So you have a whole new county administration leadership team in the county administrator's office. But since that time, we have established a combined public works department, and we have a new director. We have a new economic development director. We have a new CFO. We have a new fire rescue chief. And we have a number of new assistant directors. We have a new county attorney. We have a new community engagement director.
You fired everybody.
Yeah.
Not a man standing.
I need to, I need to respond to that, but we had some folks that had been in place for less than a year. Chief Technology Officer, our Director of Parks and Rec and Community Facilities, our Director of HR, and our Budget Director. With the exception of the Planning Director and the Director of Social Services, that is a complete change in staff, and it was for various reasons. Retirements, some performance kinds of related issues, and also just some vacancies that had come along the way. The point is, a significant change in the leadership of this organization. And if you look at the slide before you, and if you can pull that up.
Computer, please.
And go to the next slide, please. This sort of represents the journey that we've been on in the last two and a half years, and it is marked by leadership team change and direction and engagement with our work staff. Both of these have been very significant changes. The leadership team has almost 100% turned over during that period of time, and as a result, there's been a lot of effort on developing our leadership team and a team to really help direct and share the leadership of this organization going forward. That's significant work. It hasn't just been a lot of talk. We actually spent time developing a charter or charge, so that everyone was on the same page about their responsibility for this organization, this community, and moving it forward as leaders of this organization. There is actually a written charge that came out of a two-day retreat that happened about two years ago, that started us moving in the right direction and into the future. It also led to discussions about the organization itself and our climate, and what we valued as an organization, and began a process of engaging our employees in a very significant way, and more significant than I think we've had in this organization for quite some time. That has resulted in the vision and values. If you've paid attention to your emails, every week for the last seven weeks, I have sent out one of our new values to the organization. Just want you to know that those values were developed based upon a climate survey that we did about a year and a half ago with our staff, to get their thoughts on the organization, what they thought we were doing well and not so well. And beyond just asking their opinions, and I can tell you that I went to every staff meeting to encourage them to participate in this climate survey, so that we could really hear from them. And I think you've heard before that we had about 65% respond. That's a high response rate. We got some great feedback on that, and rather than just huddling together as a leadership team or in my office, we went back out to the employees and formed eight task forces in the areas where we needed to improve on. And they participated in a course of six months, actually, to come up with a set of recommendations. They presented those to the leadership team, and we have been implementing those since that time. Dramatic change in leadership and a dramatic change in engaging our workforce, providing their input, their feedback, and frankly, their recommendations on improving this organization. That is really laid out there before you, but as I mentioned, the result is that we have a new vision and set of values for our organization that we've been rolling out. That's what you've been seeing with the emails. If you could go to the next slide, I just wanted to go over those with you briefly. The vision that the workforce came up with through the climate survey, through department meetings, where we had feedback with all of our staff, and through a retreat that we had with all of our leaders, and I'm talking about below the leadership team. We had 130 of our other leaders come together and talk about these vision and values and how we might implement them. But the result of all that feedback is what you see before you. Our vision through a culture of enthusiasm, creativity, and continuous improvement, we serve to make a difference. And then a set of values that came out. Proactive ownership, infinite possibilities, customer first, stronger together, ardent learners, and unwavering respect. That came through a lot of input from our staff, both the leadership team working with the input that we'd received, but also getting feedback and coming back and revising some of these things. We got some great feedback from our staff that led to some final changes that have resulted in this. So that's a lot of work that's been going on over the last two and a half years, to create a whole new culture in this organization and a whole new climate where employees do really feel empowered and know that they can give their input and make a difference. This is not the kind of work that you snap your finger and make happen. A lot of folks still are trying to believe that this change is going to happen. So we're, it's a work in progress, but having a set of values and a vision is something that's so critical for us going forward. And just wanted you to know, the result of this is what you see before you today. We have a kickoff meeting coming next week, where we're going to have, at two different times during the day, ask all our employees to come out and participate in kind of a kickoff and saying, from this day forward, we're going to hold each other accountable for living these values and this vision for the future. This is a significant change. Just wanted to be sure that you all were fully up to speed, in addition to all of the healthy growth and transportation, and all the other things we're doing internal to this organization, which I think is one of the charges you gave me when I was hired. There's significant change going on that we're not there yet, and it'll take years to really get to the place we want to get to, but this is significant progress, and we just wanted to make sure that you had an update on it before we really kick things off officially next week. Be glad to answer questions today or any other time if you've got any more questions about some of the things that are going on in the organization.
Any questions for Mr. Foley? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. And I know you didn't fire everybody, so.
Thank you for saying that, because it.
I think you've got Ms. Light. I think you're on next.
Yes. Andrea Light, our Budget Division Director, is going to give you the year-end report. Again, this is pre-audit in November, but we wanted to give you the results of our internal review.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am Andrea Light, Budget Division Director. Can I please have the computer? Thank you. Today, we are here, like Mr. Foley said, to review the unaudited financial reports of the county. of the county and school funds, also including transportation and utility funds. We'll first look at the general fund, the revenues, the expenditures, and the changes in fund balance. Overall, there is good news. Revenues did exceed budget by about a half a percent. Expenditures were under budget, and we were able to meet all financial policy required fund balance changes. You may recall in the FY 2029 CIP that we had dedicated $1 million of year-end savings to transportation. We were able to meet that requirement and also add $2.6 million to the capital projects reserve for future use. Start with a look, a more in-depth look at the general fund revenue. In prior quarters, we had informed the board that real estate projections were coming in under budget. We realized that at the end of the year, we were under budget by about $1.5 million in real estate. There is an increase in 100% disabled veteran exonerations that attributes to this. In fiscal year 19, that was approximately $2.2 million over the assumptions, and new construction was just under assumption. Stafford County, because of our location.
Excuse me, Andrea.
Yeah, go back to that last slide for a second. So you have the real estate tax actuels lagged by $1.5 million and an increase of 100% of disabled veteran exonerations. So we collected less, and we had, I mean, those are one plus one and not the...
The final result, no, was approximately $1.5 million under budget. Our assumptions were under budget by $2.2 million. You'll recall that the board increased taxes by two cents, so it increased what we would have collected in June.
Okay. But overall, we're down 2.2.
We're down 1.5.
1.5, okay. So the 1.5 includes the 100% in increase in exonerations?
Yes, Ms. Light.
That was the question I was looking for. Thank you.
Stafford County is more sensitive to the changes in veterans because we enjoy such a large resident population of both active and retired military. Right now, 0.79% of our population overall is enjoying the 100% disabled veteran exoneration. This has increased since its inception in 2012, where only approximately 0.12% of the county's population claimed this exoneration. We found also that the median home value for 100% disabled veteran is at approximately 380,000, where overall Stafford's median home value is at 327. So there's a larger difference that is actually being exonerated. Of our 46,000 homes, single-family homes, approximately 2.7 are exonerated under the 100% disabled exoneration program. Personal property tax did end fiscal year 19 at 2.2% over budget, or about $760,000. Again, growth in exonerations also provides strain on this revenue, and we will continue to monitor these for changes and fluctuations in the future. We anticipate the change for merchants' capital due to the change in the tax rate that was adopted this spring. And rollback taxes always fluctuate. These funds, in accordance with our finance policy, are dedicated to our PDR program. And we ended fiscal year 19 at $237,000, which is just $13,000 under the budget. Under state mandated programs, Stafford is subject to reduced personal property taxes from non-resident active-duty members of the armed forces. They are not subject to this tax. Rather, they only pay, they pay their taxes on their vehicles in their home of record. In calendar year 2018, this was approximately $1.8 million of revenue that we were not able to receive, and this remains fairly steady. Our 100% disabled veterans are not required to pay personal property on their first vehicle. In calendar year 2018, this was about $310,000, and we see that number increasing relative to the increase in population. This chart is just meant to provide a projected unaudited year-end property tax revenues. Other general fund revenues, our local non-property taxes overall were $1.7 million over budget. That was led primarily by increases in sales tax and meals tax above budget. Interest revenue exceeded budget by $1.5 million, although we don't anticipate this trend to continue. This chart here provides just a look at all of the major categories for our general fund revenues. And we will switch to looking at general fund expenditures. Private day school this year did end under the amended budget at $4.9 million, which is approximately $500,000 under this budget. Private day school really does not lend itself readily to historically looking at trends to project future increases or changes. The changes in the number of students, the cost of the program, the length of the participation are not controlled by the county staff. And in the past years, we have seen an increased coordination with county and school and can see this reflected in our numbers today. The number of participants that we started with this year compared to last year, though, has grown. We started with the low 70s last year, or the low 60s. And I think we're in the low 70s this year. And we'll continue to monitor this and provide any changes to the board. We also reserve in fund balance funds for future swings in CSA or private day school costs. There has been historically $500,000 that have been set aside for any changes that may occur. This year, as part of the reduction of the fiscal year 19 budget, there were $285,000 set aside for future, for the schools, for a public day school room that they were unable to fill. Those funds have been set aside in fund balance. There's...
So on private day school, the 2% increase that they can do, it's one of the things that has really saved Stafford this year was the federal budget legis, or not the federal, the state budget legislation language that doesn't allow them to increase their fees more than 2%. From what I understand, that sun sets. And I would like to ensure that we put that on our legislative agenda for this upcoming year because in addition to the number of students we were getting, they were doing 15%, 20% increases in the fees from these providers. And so that 2% is critically important for Stafford County as we move into this next year. I just want to make sure we're all tracking on that.
The final piece of fund balance that we've added was based on the financial state, the financial policies requiring that we put any savings, both to CSA and the schools' capital project fund, which increased that balance by another $21.5 million. As we reported to the board this year, there was anticipated savings in health insurance costs in fiscal year 2019. We saw $2.3 million for the general fund and also savings within utilities and the landfill fund. By financial policies, we hold these funds in reserve and ask for appropriation after the audit is complete that they're sent to OPEB. We do see in fiscal year 2020 that our large claims have begun to normalize a little. We had some savings in fiscal year 19 because our large claims were down. And we did reduce our fiscal year 2020 budget by $867,000. So we do not anticipate this level of savings at the end of this year. The fiscal year 19 budget adopted an overall vacancy savings of $500,000 for the general fund, which we were able to achieve. Recruitment in some of the harder-to-fill positions attributed to this. Public safety vacancy savings provided funding for overtime associated with being understaffed, and there increases in demands and workloads are also driving their overtime. Staff will continue to monitor this activity in 2020 and provide for any changes. And in fiscal year 2020, we did budget $850,000. And our early indications are that this savings is on track. The juvenile detention center is...
Ms. Bonkey.
Ms. Light, could you go back to one page? And, okay. The vacancy savings here of $850,000, that's all county?
That's our general fund vacancy savings.
Okay, general fund, okay. Public safety, everybody, excluding water and sewer?
Yes, ma'am.
Library fund, anything else?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
The juvenile detention center was under budget this year by $92,000. Early indications are that we will not experience this sort of savings in our next year as our participants are starting to creep back up. Fire and rescue had a savings of $330,400, of which $185,000 was for volunteers. Last year, the board put in place a new budgeting policy for the fire and rescue volunteer stations. This supported a uniform and accountable practice. And the savings that we see here is a direct result of the board's action. Over the past two fiscal years, we have been setting aside any volunteer savings for future station repairs and upgrades. We anticipate bringing this back to you in a future CIP as a funding source. The sheriff's department did have savings of $392,000. Staff anticipates that after the audit, we will ask the board to consider appropriation for one-time uses or possibly vehicles. And this chart here just provides a savings by functional areas. This does assume that all expenditures for schools are fully spent. As we continue to finalize year-end and through confirmation of ending balances with the schools and through the audits, we'll finalize this transfer. If it's not fully spent, we anticipate this will be set aside in fund balance. Moving on to fund balance. The finance policies require that certain reserve levels are met. This chart represents the unaudited projected change from fiscal year 18 to 19. Claims fluctuation reserve relates to health insurance so that we have a reserve in case our claims go beyond our budget. CSA reserve we spoke about, this is really related to private day school. Health insurance, this net change will eventually go to OPEB. PDR is the rollback taxes. So the rollback taxes that we received increase this balance. Revenue stabilization is required by financial policies at 2% of general fund revenues. And unassigned fund balance is at 12% of general fund revenues. After all other fund balance requirements are realized, all remaining funds are recorded in the capital projects reserve. These funds require appropriation for the board before use. At the beginning of fiscal year 19, there was $4,102,006 available for projects. The items that were in blue represent repayments for loans from the capital projects reserve. These would have been previously appropriated funds from the board. The items in the kind of pink color represent items that were adopted with the fiscal year 2020 budget. The items in green are in anticipation of possible loan increases for Lake Carroll in Lynn Haven Lane. We're holding these now and will bring these back to the board if appropriation is required. And the item in orange, the $2.6 million, is a positive result of our year-end operations, leaving almost $3.9 million that we can consider using in the next CIP or for other one-time needs.
Ms. Bonkey.
Okay, so I see these are capital project reserves. Where would our loan to the airport be?
The loan to the airport is in the transportation fund.
Ah, okay, got it, thank you.
We also hold the school capital projects reserve for the general fund fund balance. There's two separate reserve accounts that we hold. Again, these funds must be appropriated through board action, and these are assigned in fund balance. So that means that the board can redesignate these for a different use. The schools' capital projects reserve, the box on the left, there are some items that have been appropriated, some anticipation of appropriation. There was VPSA savings that was not appropriated yet that happened in this past spring from interest, and some projected CSA savings. We're estimating they'll have a year-end positive results of operations of $3.5 million. This is just an estimated number at this time. And so this puts them at approximately $4 million for year-end available for projects. And again, this should come back through the CIP and be considered by the board. The box to the right, schools' major capital projects set aside. Beginning approximately two years ago, the board allowed us to set aside meals tax over budget and debt service savings for schools' major capital projects. We knew that there was a high school coming in the near future and that cash funding would be necessary to reduce reliance on debt. We end fiscal year 2019 with about a $1.7 million balance in this fund.
I've got another question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Bonkey.
I'm sorry. Another question. Where on the schools' capital project reserves, if there were excess dollars in any projects, where would that fall on this sheet?
We have not been able to experience excess savings in schools' capital projects at this time. They have either been reallocated by the schools through coming back to the school board. For example, Hartwood Elementary School had, they did a water treatment, and the board budgeted and appropriated approximately $500,000. It came in and had savings of maybe $65,000, $70,000. I don't remember the exact figure, but it wasn't a large amount. School staff came and talked with the board about being able to use those funds to put back into another project.
Okay, so is our Board of Supervisors, and I don't think we are, and I think that's why it was discussed and unanimously voted on today at the Budget and Finance meeting, that we're going to start requesting of the schools a report on those projects? Is that correct? Well, you weren't there.
That is what I understood. I was there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Very quickly, and this seems to be my, every meeting I get to ask is something, or talk about this. So in theory, the bottom line there, the 3.9, roughly $4 million, if that were desired, that could actually go to address air conditioners in kitchens and cafeterias, right?
That is correct, Mr. Cohen.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. You're wonderful.
You're welcome.
Let me get some clarification. Could we do that, or would the school board have to request it?
The Board of Supervisors can appropriate funds either by lump sum or categorically, but they cannot direct the school board to spend them in anything more specific than in lump sum or categorically.
So the school board would have to request that this money go to air conditioners?
Traditionally, that's, that has been the best practice that we've followed.
Okay, thank you.
We have other fund balance reserves for future capital needs. As I spoke about, there is four million dollars in reserves for transportation fund. This was part of our fiscal year 2020-29 CIP and adopted with the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Ms. Mauer?
Of that four million in reserve for transportation, does that include any of the excess of the gas tax that we look like we're going to be seeing from PRTC?
No, ma'am. This is all from general fund.
Okay.
This is, and we will get to transportation and look at that because the save, the gas tax revenue is exceeding budget.
It is. It, I think we have like a five million dollar balance last time I, I looked at a PRTC financial report, but I'll wait till we get there.
Our set asides for courthouse are two and a half million. These are also part of the fiscal year 2020 budget and will require board action for appropriation because this is a large capital project. Capital projects that had begun in fiscal year 2019 and will continue on in fiscal year 2020 are about one point eight million. And there's other capital reserves for things like public works where their revenues have been in excess of expenditures. The school staff has provided some preliminary year-end results. Their operating revenue, they're projecting a year-end revenue to exceed their budget by point six percent. This table provides a look at their unaudited year-end expenditures and encumbrances by functional area with a year-end savings of about two point one. The schools have also provided a preliminary look at enrollment update as of September thirteenth, 2019. This does provide that the elementary school here is shown at program capacity. Design capacity is actually lower right now than program capacity. It is fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-six students. This variance is due in part to classrooms that were designed for special need programs that are right now being utilized for general education classrooms because, again, this is an operating need of the school, the school board.
Mr. Chairman, I might point out, just we made some reference in the committee meeting about their latest projections in the high school. Of course, it's a major project. That's where you see some numbers that were referenced have, having gone up from what we'd last seen. But again, we'll be spending a lot more time talking about this.
Okay. And actually, I have a question on this. It looks like you guys are including capacity numbers at program capacity. We voted as a board to use design capacity, so why are we entertaining program capacity?
Ms. Mauer, when we receive this, we have put this in as the school has presented it to us. Elementary school is the only one that is at program capacity. Their design capacity is at fourteen thousand five thirty-six.
We received this today to put in the report, and so this is just what they've provided us. Again, this is going to roll into the CIP process.
Right.
This is the reason the comments were made about us getting it program capacity versus, so we're going to have to reevaluate these numbers for...
And while I appreciate that, I just want to make sure when we're presenting as the Board of Supervisors, we're not confusing the public by utilizing numbers that we don't take into consideration when we plan our CIP. That's, that's my only concern is, is when we're presenting design capacity or program capacity, when we have already indicated that design capacity is what we're going to focus on, it kind of confuses that message, is my only concern in the future. I appreciate that the school board sends it to us that way, but that doesn't mean it needs to be presented.
Yeah, this morning.
Yes.
And so we, our choice is to share with you what we got or to not share with you what we got at the meeting.
Yeah.
Honestly, you've given some direction to this, and it's not coming over that way. So that's what we really need to work on is getting it over the way you've asked for.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And, and also just adding to that, I mean, if we could just be, you know, constant with our, with our advice here and our guidance, and design capacity is the only thing that we're going to look for, and list that in, because that should never change, right? Design capacity is design capacity is design capacity. So if we have those constant numbers there, then let the school board present what their program capacity is, and let's see how that differs from the design capacity. But I always want to have our design capacity available for us to see and to see what the delta is with their program capacity as an aside only, but not as the primary number we're looking at. Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. I know you were just translating what they did today, but in the future, I'd like to stick with our, you know, guidance on it.
We will stick with our methodology.
Hold on, let me just look at that one more time because I, I want to see some of these. So projected us down. Okay, thank you.
For other funds, overall utilities, operating revenues did exceed the budget by one point four million or three point three percent. Expenditures, all operating expenditures were under budget due in part to some savings in debt service and health insurance savings. The debt service savings, public works staff continues to be cognizant of the timing of the need to issue debt for future utility projects and work with their financial advisors.
Ms. Mauer?
Okay, so I'm going to beat this horse.
Don't beat it too long.
I won't beat it too long. Go two slides back. Okay, so their projection for high school was going to be ninety-five twenty-one, and their enrollment was ninety-seven twenty-one. That's, that's a relatively significant delta. And given the fact that they come before this board all the time and say, our, our projections are good, and they're always on, on point, and I, I want to know if they dug down on why that projection is two hundred off. And if you could just ask the school division to look at why that projection is off, and if there was something that happened that, that would determine why this particular projection is off, because that's going to go into the future on, on how we analyze things. And all last year, they kept bragging about how their projections are rock solid. So, so we need to dig down into that, please.
And that was the reference in the committee meeting. We even have to find out if, if they've used the same basis for projecting that you all adopted. And then if, if they have, then the question is, why has it gone on? Maybe, maybe we've got some households that, just the growth that's impacting us.
Mr. Cavalier?
And I do, I do find it interesting to note that across the board at all three levels, the enrollment numbers that were submitted as of September thirtieth were all lower at each grade level than the projections that they gave. So, you know, for people that keep saying the sky is falling in terms of growth is out of control, these numbers do not reflect that.
I think this should be a topic of conversation at our joint meeting. Mr. Foley?
The transportation fund, there is a lot of good news there. We did end really strong in fiscal year nineteen with revenues one point three million dollars or twenty-six point four percent over budget. This primarily due to the change in the fuels tax floor and the, and that was one point two million or thirty-three point nine percent over the budget. The fiscal year 2019 budget plan for a transfer from the general fund to the transportation fund to cover debt associated with the courthouse road widening due to the increase of revenue and some small savings and expenditures, we were, we did not have to make that transfer. The bottom line for transportation fund is we'll be able to add within the transportation fund about one point four million to the fund balance. Overall fiscal year, fiscal year 2019 is ending with positive results for all county and the schools' funds. Policy requirements have been met, and we anticipate savings to be used for future one-time or CIP needs. Are there any questions?
Any other questions?
Just one general question.
Yes, Mr. Cavalier?
Is it December when we will be asked to reallocate the year-end funds? Is that when the audits are complete and we're ready to basically make the decision?
The audit is complete and should be presented the second meeting of December. Typically, we wouldn't ask for appropriation until at least that point, and we would like to be able to use some of these funds to program into the CIP for cash needs. So we'll bring that back to the board when we look at the CIP in November, but it won't be until at least December.
Andrea, did you, did you mean the audit results, the, the second meeting in November?
The audit results are the second meeting in December.
Because we only have one meeting in December, so we'll...
The, the meeting in December.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrea. Appreciate it. Good report.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda less item seventeen? I have a motion of a second, and I have a second. Cash, all in favor, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Ms. Bonkey, item number seventeen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pulled item number seventeen because Mr. Snellings, Mr. Cohen, and I have been receiving emails, phone calls from constituents that live off of Trusslow Road. The express lanes are going to be coming down, and Trusslow Road, that bridge is going to be closed, will not be operational. All those people that live on Trusslow Road East have no other way to get out but Trusslow Road and Route One. They, they do not have the option to go over to Plantation and Enon Road anymore. With that, we have, would like to, and basically, if you read the background report, the construction process for redoing that bridge is nine months, but let's say nine months to a year for that bridge to be rebuilt. And the only way for those residents on Trusslow to get out is Route One and Trusslow Road. And if you've ever pulled out there, you pull out, you have to nudge up a little bit to turn left, is, is very dangerous because you're coming in on a curve. We would like for the board to support asking VDOT for a temporary signal light there to support the traffic demand during that construction period. So this is a safety issue. It's already been addressed by people in the community. They're very concerned. If you're turning right, it's not a problem. If you're turning left, it's a major problem. You also have there, for those of you that live, you know, up to the northern part of the county, you have a big development, South Gate. All those people have to come down on Trusslow Road because they do not have a left-hand turn out of their development, which is south of Drew Middle School. And then, of course, we have a lot of byright subdivisions off of Trusslow as well. So anyway, I would like for the board's support of R nineteen dash two ninety-three.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Unfinished business, item number twenty, planning and zoning, amend and reordain the Stafford County zoning ordinance by amending zoning district map to reclassify from A one to R two urban residential medium-density zoning district on tax map parcel number forty-three dash six four, project known as Holly Corner Manor. Mr. Zaraf, I have received a request from the applicant. As you know, this, this item has timed out, and he's the only one that can request a deferral. I have received a request this afternoon for a thirty-day deferral, and I understand I will need a vote on that. Ms. Mauer?
A quick question.
You want to ask a question?
I, I'm asking a question. Is that a motion for a thirty-day deferral?
Yes, it's Hartwood District, so I'm motioning for a thirty-day referral at the applicant's request.
I'll second.
Second meeting in October.
I'll second.
Okay, and so that's at the second meeting in October, which then answers my question, which it doesn't come into the November timeframe.
Correct.
So I withdraw my question.
Any other questions? Discussion? I have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. Right now, Mr. Dudenheffer, would you read us into closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A resolution authorized closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the Department of Justice investigation and the establishment of cemeteries, which is a specific legal matter requiring the provisions of legal advice by counsel. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one eight, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors that on this, the seventeenth day of September two thousand and nineteen, that it be and hereby does authorize discussion of the above matter in closed meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mauer. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to nothing. We are now in closed session.
Whereas the board has, on this seventeenth day of September two thousand and nineteen, adjourned into a closed meeting in accordance with the formal vote of the board and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas the Virginia Freedom of Information Act provides for certification that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the law, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify on this, the seventeenth day of September two thousand and nineteen, that it, that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from our open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such, such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, we heard, discussed, and considered by the board.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Mauer. Please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. We are adjourned until seven...
Six to one.
I'm sorry, six to one, my mistake. We will adjourn to ABC for the growth management if we have time. Do we have time?
Mr. Chairman, there, there is food in the back, and we could delay that for ten minutes if you all want to grab something, and we just need to start by six.
Yeah, my concern is, are we going to have time to even get anything accomplished?
Yeah, however you want to handle it.
Okay, we'll chat about it and, and overdone.
All right.
Bonkey will lead us in prayer, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today to represent the citizens of Stafford County. We pray for your guidance as we discuss the matters before us, and Lord, we thank the citizens that took their personal time to speak before us in these chambers. We pray for wisdom to govern amid the differing perspectives on the issues of our time. Father, we all pray for the seventy thousand people in the Bahamas that are homeless and trying to find shelter and food, all while trying to rebuild their lives to a new normal. We ask for prayers for those families that lost loved ones and for the hundreds that remain missing in the devastation. Father, we thank you for the first responders that are on the island helping with basic tasks and needs of the people. Lord, we continue to ask for your support for our first responders and our military near and far as they work to protect our nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a couple of proclamations tonight, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Jack Cavalier of the Griffiths-Wide Water District who has a proclamation he would like to give tonight.
If I could have LaKyla and her family and Mr. White, can you make it up on those Yeah, this is one of these, could have been a bad news story turned into a good news story, all because of this young lady here in this very pretty purple dress that's up here. LaKyla, can you tell us how old you are first?
Ten.
Ten years old. And you, are you a fifth grader at Kate Waller Barrett School? Yeah? That's a, that's a good school, too, isn't it? You like it? Yeah. Well, I heard about this story, and so we wanted to give you a proclamation to thank you on behalf of the county for your quick actions and your bravery and just your overall helpfulness in this matter, because it, it could have been a lot more severe had you not thought quickly on your feet and performed these actions that, that helped. And so you are really to be commended, and everybody's very proud of you, especially this guy in the boat over here, I guess, huh? You were the beneficiary of this, right? You're Timothy White. And what's your name, ma'am?
Amber Wesley.
You're, you're LaKyla's mother, Amber. And this brother? Samuel White. You've got a couple of good marks on the face there, huh? Are you a football player?
Academy.
Academy? Oh, okay. Good. I understand. Okay, great. Well, let me read a proclamation here that we have for you, LaKyla. Old guys like me have to put our glasses on to read. He's not as old as me, though. So this is a proclamation recognizing LaKyla Wesley for her brave and quick actions in seeking help for an injured man. Whereas LaKyla Wesley is a 10-year-old girl in the fifth grade at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary and the daughter of Amber Wesley. And whereas on August 12, 2019, LaKyla, her mother, and her mother's friend, Timothy White, were enjoying an afternoon at a swimming hole in Stafford County when Mr. White jumped on a rock, breaking his foot in three places. And whereas Ms. Wesley has trained LaKyla from an early age to call 911 in the event of an emergency due to her disabled grandmother. And whereas Ms. Wesley has trained LaKyla from an, whereas, I'm sorry, whereas Ms. Wesley sent LaKyla with a cellphone up the hill from the swimming hole to find a cell signal and to seek help. And whereas LaKyla, with poise and a calm manner, found a cell signal and called 911, giving accurate details of the incident and the location of the swimming hole, a little place down on Aquia Creek, right? And whereas LaKyla stayed on the phone until dispatch advised she could hang up, and she helped direct first responders to Mr. White, because that's heavily wooded area there, and not a lot of people probably know that area, right? But you did, right? Yes. Now for, now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 17th day of September 2019, that it be and hereby recognizes and honors LaKyla Wesley for her bravery and quick actions in securing help for Timothy White on August 12, 2019. Thank you very much.[856.44][856.44](applause) Now, would you, would you like to add some more to the story right now?
I don't like talking.
You don't like talking? All right. How about Mom?
That's why I brought her up.
Okay, well, you're the spokesperson then, right?
I'm not a public speaker either.
Okay.
We call them secretaries. That's why I brought Sam.
Sam? Do you want to say something? Okay. Mr. White, you want to tell?
All right. I'm just glad she was there and was able to act quickly, and I wasn't getting out.
Yeah, tough to walk with a broken foot, isn't it? And, and tiring? I bet. Well, thanks again for everything that you've done in this, and I congratulate you all.
Come on up, Mr. Cohen. I'd like to ask the representatives from the Daughters of the American Revolution to join us up here on podium. Today is the 236th anniversary of our Constitution, and I can tell you, it was a document written by some very, very smart people. It has endured 232 years, and although every once in a while it's under attack, like it is today, I'm confident it will continue to endure. I've asked Mr. Cohen to do the presentation tonight because Mr. Cohen represents George Washington's boyhood home in his district, and I thought it was appropriate, since George Washington was so involved in our Constitution, in the writing of it, and of course, the father of our country, that it would be appropriate for him to do that. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cohen.
And he has his Constitution tile on, by the way.
Yes, and being the, an educator in government, what is amazing about our George Washington was that he purposely did not try to dictate to the members of the convention what to do. He knew if he spoke on any issue, everybody would follow along and automatically do it. And there's very few people I know in public life today that if they had a chance to dictate everything, would actually keep their mouth shut, myself included. So we thank you for what the DAR does as an SAR qualifier. I appreciate you. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas September 17, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas two of America's and Stafford's most revered native sons, George Washington and George Mason, attended and had significant impacts on the Constitutional Convention of 1787. And whereas George Mason wrote the Virginia Declaration of Rights, which became the basis for the Bill of Rights, and then became the first 10 amendments of the Constitution. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford Board of Supervisors on this, the 17th day of September 2019, that the board encourages citizens to reaffirm the ideals of our founding fathers by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, the Constitution of the United States of America.[1138.54][1138.54](applause)
I brought for the board some pocket copies of the Constitution. Thank you so much.
I think we need it.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Not me.[1154.18][1154.18](laughter)
Alicia's the one that has.
Yes, Alicia's. Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Albert Einstein said, "The strength of the Constitution lies entirely in the determination of each citizen to defend it. Only if every single citizen feels duty-bound to do his share in this defense are the constitutional rights secure. Let's all commit to commemorate Constitution Week by becoming more informed citizens and seeking not just to read the Constitution, but to understand it, so that we may defend our rights as individuals and as a nation. On behalf of the Falls of the Rappahannock Chapter of the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, thank you for acknowledging the importance of this week."
This time, I'd like to ask Ms. Mauer to join me, and also representatives from Lucia Ministries, if they'd join me up front. This is a proclamation that will recognize September 15 to October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, a very important month. And I'll tell you, it's, you read up on some of this stuff, and you find out that 12% of Stafford County's population is Hispanic, and it just shows you the diversity that we have in this county and how much that community and others like them do so much to contribute to what we do here. So Ms. Mauer's going to do the presentation. I'm going to step out of your way.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming. We're really glad to have you here, and we have a proclamation to celebrate National Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic Americans have made significant contributions in all phases of our economic, social, cultural, and political life. And whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the theme of this year's Hispanic Heritage Month is Hispanic Americans: A History of Serving Our Nation. And whereas Stafford is proud that persons of Hispanic or Latino descent constitute more than 12% of Stafford's local total population and have added to and enhanced the community life in the county. And whereas Hispanic and Latino Staffordians are leaders in business, military service, education, healthcare, science, and technology, and other areas that propel Stafford forward in jobs, business, education. And whereas our Hispanic community contributes to the great diversity and unity of Stafford County with a rich history of different cultures and ethnic impact. And whereas, as Stafford continues to build a community that welcomes all, we thank our Hispanic and Latino community for their many contributions to both Stafford and our country. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 17th day of September 2019, that it be and hereby does recognize September 15 to October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month 2019. Thank you so much for joining us. Would you like to make a few comments?
Good evening. We are very humbled and thankful for this award. And so on behalf of the Board of Director of Lucia and the community we represent and the founders of Lucia, we thank you for, for this.[1373.54][1373.54](applause)
Can you let Stafford know how to get involved in your organization?
Our organization really is run mainly by volunteers, and we welcome anyone who would like to work alongside of us in the programming that we do and the building relationships that we do. We are very happy to welcome anyone who wants to work with us. You do not have to speak Spanish. We only require that you love the people that we love and want to serve the people that we serve. And so you may get in touch with us at Lucia Ministries, luciministries.org. You can find us there. You can find our phone number. My name is Greg Smith. I work in immigration legal services, and I'll be happy to talk with anyone about, about serving alongside with us. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.[1430.12][1430.12](applause) Thank you so much for having, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks to Mr. Cohen, Ms. Mauer, for assisting me in that. You did great, as always. At this time, we have public presentations. Anyone can come forward and speak on any subject they would like, unless it pertains to one of the two public hearings tonight, and we ask that you hold those comments until the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and address. The green light will come on. Then it'll go to yellow light. You'll have about a minute left. When the red light comes on, please wrap up your remarks. I don't have any speaker cards, so come on down.
Am I going to be good on the time I told? Okay. It's a little longer, but I think it's appropriate. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Danielle Cortez of the Aquia District, a proud American of Hispanic descent, and I've lived here for 35 years. I'm a former Marine and one of five generations and a Vietnam veteran who served our nation in war peace since World War I. The Cortez family legally immigrated from Spain and Mexico. Being Spanish and Native American, from several Aztec Indian tribes, is a mixture of many Mexican-American families today in Stafford. My family started the international media conglomerate known as Univision. We have been military, media, and political operatives all our lives. Presently, I'm the Director of Public Affairs for the National Veterans Court Alliance, promoting H.R. 886, the Veterans Treatment Court Coordination Act of 2019 in Congress. Hispanic Heritage Month did begin September the 15th and ends, as you just heard, October the 15th. It was initially Hispanic Heritage Week, signed into law by President Johnson in 1968, then expanded by President Reagan in 1988. September the 15th was chosen because it's the independence anniversary of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September the 16th and September the 18th. Since the first national observance, White House occupants have delivered a presidential proclamation to recognize these, our individuals each year. President Trump's proclamation can be read by going to whitehouse.gov, and a remarkable celebration ceremony is scheduled for September the 27th at 6:00 PM at the White House. Last year, my wife and I were humbled, not just to be invited, but formally announced and received by the President, along with seven other national Hispanic leaders, in the Blue Room prior to the ceremony in the East Room. This year, about 250 distinguished Americans of Hispanic descent, representing 59 million Latinos of various civic and entrepreneurial advance, have been invited by the President. Stafford County should be quite proud to acknowledge another member of one of its leading families, Mr. Philip Garcia Chichister, sitting here to my right with his wonderful family. Our Assistant Commos Attorney has also been asked and has accepted the President's invitation. Also attending will be the Honorable Judge Ricardo Regal of the 15th Judicial Circuit presiding in Spotsylvania County Circuit Court, and his charming wife, Cory Willis Regal. My wife and I will be proud to attend once again, and with the President and others, welcome these outstanding Hispanic national role models and representatives to the White House. The Hispanic family is a close-knit group, an important social unit. We place great value on appearance, as well as a sense of honor, duty, industry, and pride. That duty extends to many serving in our armed forces today. Presently, there are approximately 1.1 million Hispanic veterans in our military. National historians acknowledge Hispanic military service since our Revolutionary War. Troops from Spain, Mexico, and the Caribbean region, along with Hispanic Americans, were instrumental in defeating the British along the Gulf of Mexico from Pensacola and Baton Rouge to Natchez and Mobile, securing our southern flank. At Yorktown, Virginia, French and American forces were able to sustain their triumphant efforts and pay for salaries, provisions, and ammunition, thanks in large measure to financial donations received from Hispanic women in Cuba, which validates my belief that women have always controlled the money. History also reminds me that the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo, signed February the 2nd, 1848, ended the Mexican-American War. There, the United States paid Mexico $15 million in an agreement that included our territorial expansion, annexing the northern portion of Mexico, resulting in what is today Texas, New Mexico, Arizona, Nevada, Utah, and California. Yes, patriotic Latin Americans have fought in every major engagement in the United States. In fact, 61 proud Americans of Hispanic descent have been awarded the nation's highest decoration, the Medal of Honor. decoration, the Medal of Honor. And many thousands have been wounded and given the final measure in defense of our nation. With several veterans on board, I know you, like me, embrace all veterans who have served honorably. So today, it is fitting that we recognize one heroic young former Army serviceman of Hispanic descent who fought in the Middle East and was also decorated with a Bronze Star. He is also of the Stafford Commos Attorney's Office and Philip's brother, Mr. J. Garcia Chichister. J., like his father Dan Chichister, our former Commos Attorney, was also awarded a Bronze Star for his service when we were both in Vietnam. The Garcia-Chichister family are one fine example of Stafford's patriotic Latin community. The term Hispanic originally denoted a relationship to Hispania, more commonly known in ancient times as Portugal and Spain, and the people colonized by those two countries. Hispanics are not a monolithic group. Actually, some Hispanic subgroups have remarkably few common characteristics. Various subgroups reflect differences in ethnicity, culture, origin, and cover a wide racial spectrum. Hispanics are a proud mix of European, Asian, African, and Native American people. The term Hispanic and Latino are used interchangeably in the United States for people with origins in Spanish-speaking or Portuguese-speaking countries like Mexico, Costa Rica, and Brazil. Contrary to popular belief, Hispanics are not a race, but an ethnicity. The term Hispanic was first employed by the United States Government in the early 1970s and has since been used in local and federal employment, mass media, academia, and business market research. It has been used in the U.S. Census since 1980. Because of the popularity of the word Latino, the government adopted the term in 1997, using it in the 2000 Census. According to the 2010 Census, Hispanics accounted for more than half of the growth in the United States population between 2000 and 2010. The U.S. is the fifth-largest country with Hispanics in the world. The majority of the U.S. population is Mexican-American, followed in size by Central and South Americans, Puerto Ricans, and Cuban Americans. With the election season in full swing, our Latin community and our immigration policies continue to be the focus locally and nationally. Sadly, due to the undocumented not following immigration law and issues that persist, such as 335,000 asylum case backlogs exacerbated by fraudulent claims. But America is a land of immigrants, and the vast majority of our law-abiding Hispanic community must not be identified by those who violate our laws. Like you, the majority of my Latin community wants to obey our laws, pay their taxes, and raise our children responsibly. This is why the United States must adopt an immigration system that serves our national interests. As an independent voter who refuses to join any party, I support President Trump's plans, committed to constructing a border wall and ensuring the swift removal of unlawful illegal drug traffickers that peddle the deadly drug fentanyl and victimize our women and children. I appeal to this Board to help end chain migration and eliminate the visa lottery, and move the nation to a merit-based entry system. But we need to be responsibly addressing the Dreamer community with compassion. Such actions will advance the safety and prosperity of all Americans while we assist new immigrants immigrating. Part of President Trump's Hispanic Heritage Proclamation states, and I quote, "Since I took office, Hispanic-American unemployment rates and poverty rates have hit record lows. My administration is always working to create an environment that fosters opportunity for all Americans, and I have signed the Pro-Growth Tax Cut Jobs Act, which has put more money in the pockets of American workers and have given businesses more money to invest in their employees."
Mr. Cortez, I'm going to have to ask you to kind of wrap up.
In closing, I would like to say that it is my hope that during our month-long celebration, we recommit ourselves to promoting and respecting the rule of law based on religious and constitutional principles of our great nation. And we thank, and it was very proper for you, to present your proclamation to Lucia Ministries for their outreach to our community. And we thank you, Mr. Foley, for your dedication and responsibility, responsible action, to not just our immigrant community, but all communities in general. And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else in the Board chambers that would like to speak on any subject except what's up for public hearing? Anyone at all? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. We will go into public hearings. Item number 21, Public Works Transportation Consider An Ordinance to amend and reordain Stafford County Section 15-4.1(c) entitled Maximum Speed Limits in Certain Residence District's Penalty on Decatur Road, Prop. Ordnance 019-45.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Alex Ozjak, Transportation Program Manager, and here to present on establishing a residence district on Decatur Road. The county has received multiple requests from residents along Decatur Road complaining about, obviously, the excessive speeding and wishing to install some traffic calming measures. VDOT conducted a traffic study earlier this year and determined that a speeding problem does exist on this road. Decatur Road met all the required criteria to establish a residential district, along with the additional $200 fine for speeding. You can see some of the criteria listed here, such as the type of road, the speed limit, the amount of vehicles, and the 85th percentile speed, which was 36 miles per hour, where the posted speed limit is only 25. As far as VDOT's policies and procedures, they've since adjusted their procedures, and they no longer have a numerical requirement where 51% of residents have to vote in favor of the procedure. Now they only require a showing of community support. Staff is of the opinion that the community support was expressed through almost 500 signatures that were gathered on a petition to install stop signs and reduce speeding along Decatur Road, as well as some recent articles and feedback from citizens on articles on the Freelance Star. Here is a map showing a Decatur Road, highlighted in red, where the residence district will be established. And in conclusion, if the Board approves it tonight, Board Ordnance 019-45 will amend the county code and add Decatur Road to the list of existing residence districts, and will allow VDOT to place the additional $200 fine signs below posted speed limit signs. And again, this $200 fine can only be suspended if the court issues 20 hours of community service. That pretty much wraps up my presentation. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or against this ordinance, please step forward. Once again, you have three minutes. The green light, and then the yellow light will give you one minute, and the red light is means wrap it up. So is anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this ordinance for or against? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was brought up simply because a resident out there experienced a loss. His service dog was struck and killed on Decatur Road, and it's a really bad section near the intersection of Brent Point Road, right there. And we have done a traffic study, and it's proven that the average speed limit is in excess of 36 miles an hour there. And I think that in conjunction with this particular measure, along with the fact that Decatur Road is going to be repaved and widened and safety improvements made next spring, and that was a resounding feedback that I got from the residents, in addition to the 500 people who signed this petition from Mr. Paul Magnner. I will wholeheartedly support this Ordnance 0, I mean, 019-45.
I have a motion and a second. End of discussion. Hearing none, please cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 22, Public Hearing Planning and Zoning, authorize the conveyance of county-owned property tax maps, parcel numbers 47-39, 47-39B, 47-39C, and 47-41. I ought to be an auctioneer. To Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for inclusion in Crowsnest Natural Area Preserve. Ms. Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Kathy Baker, Department of Planning and Zoning. This item is for the Board to consider conveyance of county-owned property to Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for inclusion in Crowsnest Natural Area Preserve. This does consist of the four parcels totaling 123 acres. The property overall was acquired by the county in 2017. There were donated funds utilized, and a matching grant fund was secured through Virginia Land Conservation Foundation. The county accepted the conveyance of the property from the original owners as open spacelands pursuant to the Open Spacelands Act, and this was in conjunction with the grant funding that was given. As you see on the overall property, the red parcels highlighted to the left of the screen are the four total property, four total parcels. All of the green is the Crowsnest Natural Area Preserve, and immediately adjacent is the Great Blue Heron Property, Potomac Creek Heronry, that is owned by Northern Virginia Conservation Trust, but has been dedicated as part of Crowsnest Natural Area Preserve. These particular properties have a majority of upland forest, several steep slopes. It's very similar as the rest of the Crowsnest Peninsula. There are a large number of wetlands and over a mile of streams, particularly perennial streams, that are protected with Resource Protection Areas. There are many habitat benefits for the rare plants and nesting birds, migratory birds, other wildlife on the entire peninsula. This is, the property itself is suitable habitat for the federally listed Small World Begonia. There are 12 documented cultural resources. Out of those, there are four that are potentially eligible for National Register nomination. And as I noted, the buffer area for the adjacent Potomac Creek Heronry. And just a few photographs. This is one of the major perennial streams that flow through the property. You can see the topo and the old, a lot of the old growth vegetation. The one picture up in the left-hand corner is actually an old roadbed associated with some of those archaeological resources. And there is, some of the soils are highly calcareous, and as you can see in some of the streams, the fossil shells and the scallops, the shells that you can actually find in the streams on the property. There's an area, a large concentration of blueberry bushes in one of the areas that was previously cleared. And then, again, much wildlife that you'll find on the property. The staff is recommending adoption of Resolution R19-235, which would authorize the conveyance of the property to DCR. This would become part of the Crowsnest Natural Area Preserve, and DCR would manage it in accordance with their natural area policies, along with the remainder of Crowsnest. And I do have Mike Lott here from Department of Conservation and Recreation, if anyone has any questions of himself or of me.
Any questions for Ms. Baker? Anyone? Thank you, Ms. Baker. This time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is anyone that'd like to speak for or against this property transfer? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Board. Ms. Shelton, this is your district.
What a privilege to do this. And so I am so proud of Stafford County being able to have this property, to be able to transfer these over to DCR. I'm so happy you're here to get this gift from us. And so with that being said, I would like to make the motion to approve R19-235.
I have a motion and a second. Do I hear any discussion? Just real briefly, I, of course, grew up here in Stafford County, and I was privileged as a kid to be a neighbor of the guy who was, his father was caretaker of Crowsnest. The owner was a U.S. Senator, I believe. His name was Boykin. It was back in the 50s. What a beautiful place. And the county has worked long and hard to save this, believe me, long and hard. And it is just a great place to go. So with that said, I'll call for the vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to nothing. I think I forgot to close that public hearing, so let me make sure to tell everybody the public hearing is closed. Anything else to come before the Board, Mr. Foley? Meeting is adjourned.